I'd like to call to order the meeting of Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education on Tuesday, June 11th. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Snoblen, Mr. Edson.
Here.
Mr. Mormon, Mr. Block.
Here.
Mr. Schreiber, Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Burgner.
Here.
Full house. Everyone saw my last meeting, my first meeting, and couldn't stay away.
It's very compelling.
Very compelling. We'll open with a very brief president's report. We had an executive session prior to this meeting. Action of the board during closed session is prohibited and none was taken. We've got a really heavy agenda tonight, so I'm going to be really brief, but just wanted to talk a little bit about graduation on Saturday. Six out of the seven of us had an opportunity to participate, and it's a really exciting day in the life of our students, and it's a great way for us to witness some of the results of our collective community labors. I'd like to thank Mike for the weather, since that was unbeknownst to him, his responsibility. Jim, you managed to hand off 439 diplomas without a single drop, and I don't think I missed the box once on the absentias. And also, most importantly, to compliment the students of the class of 2013 for their achievement and their conduct on Saturday, it was really exemplary. We have had, out in the community, moving on to another subject, an invitation to the community to submit applications to participate on a couple of different board committees. We've got 15 community members who've answered the call and submitted applications. The deadline for those submissions was last Friday. Together with the administration, we're going to work on establishing a process to vet those candidates and narrow it down to two community members to participate on the education committee of the board and two to participate on the finance and operations committee of the board. Those selected will join recently appointed board members on those committees: Nikki Snoblen, Monty Edson, and Dave Schreiber on the education committee; Dick Block, Ted Mormon, and John Powers on the finance and operations committee. Hope to have those selections completed by the end of June, certainly before our next meeting in mid-July, and we'll roll into the new school year with a full slate of committee participation. I think Mr. Simic has got some exciting news he wants to share, so I'm just going to turn it directly over to him for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Burgner, and we've got a number of things, and we're going to hold the best for last, and we have some certainly very exciting news. So, Mr. Thiel, I'd like you to begin with your interim principal report.
Okay, we have a couple of end-of-the-year items. You did touch on the first item I had, but I wanted to thank the board for their participation in the graduation this Saturday. It's always special to have you involved. I also wanted to say, if everyone gets a chance, if you weren't there, to watch it on cable, because the three students gave terrific speeches, as well as Mr. Simic, with some very positive messages for our graduates, and I want to give a final best-of-luck and wishes to the class of 2013. Summer school is going to start next Monday, the 17th, and will run to the end of July. We have three history classes, driver ed, and some special ed programs that'll run for the summer for their summer school program. And last, I want to thank Jen Hermes and the committee that she put together to make the changes for improvement for our book buyback process. We were able to run 1,200 students' parents through a two-day process of returning books, and the wait time was a fraction of what it's been in the past, and way more efficient. It was a very nice process that's been set up, and one of the biggest additions is that there was no cash involved, and parents will see a smaller bill when they pay for their books in the fall, because they'll be credited for the books they returned here at the end of the school year. So, it was very efficiently run and very well set up, so Jennifer, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thiel. And to be clear, with the book buyback, there was cash involved, and it went to students before, and somehow that money didn't make it home, is that correct?
Well, the last day of, first day of summer, last day of school, students with cash in their pocket, I think you have the answer.
I wonder if we'll hear from merchants downtown about that, that their cash flow has dropped a little bit because of that. So, again, I'd like to thank Mrs. Hermes for really great work with a group of people in the building and also here on West Campus to address one of the sort of chronic struggles that our parents have expressed, is that, you know, they spend a lot of time in line and a lot of money, and so in this case, there'll be less time and also less money to be spent in both ways in the fall, so it's a great thing.
Yep, exactly, and they're going to meet in the summer to see if they can also improve the process for the fall, the book buy process.
Okay. I'd also like to hand over to Dr. Cooley. She's got some very exciting news from student work in the building and a student report from within the building just today.
This week, our teachers had some work time, and the portions that I have observed have been just outstanding. I think that you would be very pleased with the work that they're doing. Let me see if I can get this up. On Monday, Carol Jago, a professional, was in talking to all the faculty about literacy and the Common Core and how that was a shared responsibility, and it was received very, very well. She gave some concrete examples all through her presentation, engaged all of our faculty in actually understanding what our students would go through in this higher level of looking for evidence and argument and things like that through all types of text, which includes video and all kinds of things. Let me straighten this out a little bit. Then, this morning, faculty had a chance to share some of the innovations that they've been working on, and again, a couple of wonderful hours well-spent. It started with students graduating seniors talking about what they appreciated from their teachers. It was very, very touching. And what you're looking up here is the result of something that was started on the institute day. When Mike came into the faculty and we talked about the ideal school and what would that look like, and we did visioning exercise among all of our faculty, well, the social studies department agreed to kind of take this on with students. So, four of social studies teachers decided to work with kids and prep them on what would they, what are ideal schools? What do they look like? Where are they? What would that include? Elizabeth Christofalakis and Sidney Collier presented today to the faculty, and these were the common threads that ran through what the students said they would like in an ideal school, again, from these four teachers across several of their classes. So, creative and flexible scheduling was the top item. You know, they didn't like to be locked into the situation that they're in right now. They wanted the freedom to do different things at different times. Real-world application, I know later we're going to be talking about student service, community service work. They want the chance to apply, do internships, do some, again, the applications. They want increased use of technology in a variety of different ways. The student emotional wellness was very big to them. They wanted health curriculums to be expanded. They talked about having an advisory where they could be with that trusted teacher through all four years and getting to know their social workers better on an ongoing basis so that it wasn't only at a moment of crisis. And then the last thing was, they noticed, students noticed that across teachers, sometimes the curriculum hasn't been consistent across the different teachers teaching the same class, so they thought it'd be helpful to them if they moved from one teacher to another, maybe at the mid-year or that kind of thing, for them to have felt like they'd be prepared for any class and have the same outcome. And they've noticed their perception is that there are differences in the grading scales as well, and they think that that would be a good area for consistency. So perhaps, we've got our new principal here tonight, it's a little early to introduce him, perhaps, but he can be advised of this. There were many other interesting projects. I'm just going to mention one that the faculty brought up. Dreah Weiss and Laura Grig had been researching a technology integration model where teachers could look at the technology they're using and decide, what level, how am I using this technology? Am I just using technology as a substitute for a piece of paper or pencil, that kind of thing? Or am I getting to the highest levels of use of technology called redefinition, where the technology is making actually a brand-new task that was previously inconceivable had it not been for that technology? So this is a little rubric. The teachers also had researched ways that teachers, tools, apps, different things that they could use to create the redefinition or modification or the augmentation or the substitution. So this, again, was just one of the many things that teachers were sharing with each other today about innovations. So again, I think that the time has been well-spent here so far this week.
Thank you, Dr. Cooley, and it's a logical extension of the tri-district day that we had with District 65, 67, and 115. And from the mouths of babes, you see that they have an awfully keen insight into what their world should be and how they'd like to see school meet their needs, and then this will also be continued in conversation with our public as well as part of the school board's engagement of the public. So, some of this will look very familiar to the person we're about to introduce. Very pleased to welcome LeAnn and Barry Rogers as our new principal family to Lake Forest High School. And Mr. Rogers, if you would. So, we're going to have an opportunity...
Don't we, shouldn't he sing the fight song now?
We're still adjusting to Mr. Rogers. That whole thing is, you know, is, we're still in adjustment there. So it's a wonderful thing to welcome Barry Rogers and the notions that, the things that the students brought up about real-world application and about flexible schedules and meaningful curriculum, all of these things are things that, as the principal of Northside College Prep, that we went and saw on our site visits there, and super-engaging across the board, really, really compelling, and it's wonderful to see that these things that the students are saying, hey, this is what we're interested in, and that's what you've been doing at Northside. It's not that we're going to become Northside next, but obviously, some of those ideas, the generation of those ideas are really, really great to see. And I know, Mr. Burgner, you have, yes, yes, your name, and something more official to welcome the Rogers family to the Lake Forest neighborhood. So, Mr. Rogers, if you'd like to share?
Thank you.
Now, we purposely moved things up a little bit here, the public part, and you have a nine-year-old at home that can enjoy some of this stuff. It's his birthday today, so there's going to be a lot of meeting in the formal part, but we understand that you're going to need to run off. We wanted to make sure and give you a chance to say hello, Mr. Rogers.
Sure. Well, hello, everyone, and I can't tell you how excited I am. Both LeAnn and I are thrilled to be part of the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, Knollwood community. This is a really exciting time in education. I think it's a time like no other. As Julia pointed out, some of the things really coming from students and meeting students where they're at, they're engaged in a world that's so much different than ours, and I think so much more interesting in some ways than ours. So I'm excited about working with world-class faculty and staff, Mike and his high-performing team, working with the community. I think there's so much out there, so many opportunities, you know, just making connections with the private sector as well. I think it's going to be a real, real exciting time here in Lake Forest, at Lake Forest High School. So, again, thank everybody, and I probably, the person I need to thank the most through all of this stuff, behind every crazy principal, successful principal, there's a completely sane and wonderful woman, at least in my case, I know that's the case, but just want to thank LeAnn, my wife, for everything you've done to help us and help the family to this point. So, thank you, LeAnn.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Could you tell us about colloquium, where it came from and what it is? Because this is really a neat idea, and all the students we talked to said that this was one of the favorite parts of their day.
Sure. So, colloquium kind of explodes the notion of the traditional school and starts to break down those barriers, and as you saw, as Julia pointed out, students are yearning for this. We're seeing it happen in the workplace, where the workplace is being redefined and what it looks like. But colloquium is a three-hour seminar type of a course, and colloquium is, in essence, a conversation where students and teachers engage in topics of interest, and they can be anything from alternative sources of energy and getting the school off the grid. It can be working with Morningstar Investments. It can be things like slam poetry, writing original screenplays. So students have these opportunities to really go beyond the traditional learning and really have very, very high levels of engagement. People ask, well, you know, especially in this time of high accountability, high-stakes testing, how does this translate? Well, I think the proof is in the pudding, and if you look at what we're able to do at Northside Prep, and it's the good-to-great or great-to-great or model, when you have those really high levels of engagement and when you really have, are able to move a faculty, incredible things are going to happen. As a faculty member, I can tell you colloquium was very exciting, because I was a chemistry teacher and a biology teacher, and so in colloquium, I could really dig down into special topics that I liked. So, looking at the history of the Chicago River and the ecology of the Chicago River, we got out there, and sometimes we even got out on canoes, and we went down to the Origins Park at Bubbly Creek. We learned about the city. It opened up so many opportunities. Colloquium also would feature some larger ideas that we would bring into the school community and some larger themes for the school to rally around. And so this past year, our largest theme was on innovation and careers 2.0. And so during this, during these special days, and we had two of them this year, we would bring in, one day we brought in 40 business leaders, some of the most innovative people that I think are around, people from 1871 and Sandbox in Chicago, people like Howard Tullman, who is a real thinker, someone who thinks other in education and so on and so forth. So you can come together and rally around on these large days. We've had things on the Celestial Garden where we've brought our whole school to the Adler Planetarium, worked with their experts, looking at astronomy and how all the different societies have looked at the heavens and the stars. So really, these incredible opportunities for learning. Along with that day, we also had a flexible schedule so that we, during that special Wednesday, students, if they wanted to have time to finish up an art project, could get studio time. If they needed to finish up an AP Biology lab, they could do that as well. If they just needed some time for wellness and they needed to go and play a game of basketball during that flexible time, we know how overtaxed our students are, they could do that. And it also left time for targeted tutoring for those students who really needed it. So, again, expanding the notion of what school can be, and I think we're really at a tipping point right now in schools and education. And so, again, once again, I'm very excited to be here at Lake Forest, to work with a high-power team, and I'm very excited to be working with Mike. From what I gather so far, he's a little bit of a maverick, which I like, but really, since the first conversation I've had with everyone in this community, whether it's been Mike, whether it's been teachers, whether it's been board members, it's always, the conversation has always started with students, and I think that's where it should start and that's where it should end. So, once again, thank you, everybody, excited to be here and to be a scout. Go Scouts!
And Barry, did you say your son, it's your son who's having his birthday today? So there's a bag full of scouts where for a birthday boy.
I've got a nine-rouled candle, a little bit bright. That's okay.
And I can personally attest to that today is the best day of the year to have a birthday. I've learned from my own experience, so thank him for allowing you to be there, to be here on his special day. Thanks for coming. I guess we can take from the superintendent's departure that his superintendent report is over.
You know, if I could just interject the rest of the day on these workdays, the mornings have been kind of dedicated to innovative bringing in speakers, and some really good speakers, some really good ideas have been shared about future education, but the afternoons, mid-afternoons have been dedicated to department work and cross-departmental work. For example, today, I sat in with our core teams, which is our counselors, deans, and social workers, for an hour and a half discussing different intervention strategies on RTI and referral process and how we can serve students. All three of those different individuals work very closely to students, so there's been a lot of cross-departmental work as well as just individual departmental work going on in the afternoon, and they've been really utilizing the time to work together as a department.
Well, let's move on. This is the opportunity in the meeting to allow some public participation. If anybody wishes to address the board, this is the time to do so. Interested speakers should come to the microphone and state their name and address. If they're representing any group, please identify the group you're here to represent, and each person should please limit their statements to three minutes. Thanks.
I'm Nancy Thorne from Lake Bluff, and I would like to speak just for a couple minutes about the approval of Kathy O'Hare's consulting contract. Now Kathy O'Hare, I do know her because I'm from Lake Bluff, and she was Lake Bluff's middle school principal. After a very long career, she retired. She loves children, but it is the assumption that she was hired here at Lake Forest High School more or less just to, well, extend her career because she loves students and loves to teach. Now, that's fine, but the job that she has is not really substantial. She involves planning a career day once a year where she pairs up kids with like vets and doctors and lawyers to shadow them for one day. She's also in charge of exploring volunteer opportunities for kids, and some are even paid positions, which are very, very rare. Now, my take is why do we really need two full-time free people helping our kids to volunteer their time? Because an assistant was appointed for Kathy O'Hare. Now, my dilemma is that some time ago, I wanted to know the contract of Kathy O'Hare. Now, I made a FOIA contract, a request, rather, for all documents about when and why Kathy O'Hare's position was formed and her job duties. The response I received back was, no such documents exist. Why are we creating a position without job prescriptions and without a written record of why the position was created? This smacks of cronyism, whether it was done by Griffith or anybody else. Now, I do have a list of questions without a FOIA, which I asked too, which I hope that the board and also Dr. Semic or Michael Semic will help me answer. These are the questions to be answered about Kathy O'Hare in regard to her consulting contract. Number one, what does Kathy O'Hare pay per year? Often, school boards simply neglect to state on the record what the independent contractor makes. Two, what is her assistant paid per year? Three, when and why was the position created? And four, what does Kathy O'Hare and her assistant do? Five, what percentage of students participate in the shadowing day? The school gets a whole day off. I don't think many kids even participate in this particular event. And six, their services are redundant of what counselors and other club members do. And then finally, number seven, not finally, one more after seven. Seven, does Kathy O'Hare get paid additional money to supervise three student clubs? And finally, eight, with school funding breaking the backs of taxpayers, can we really afford to pay for a service like this? Now, a website could be set up to take care of what O'Hare and assistant does. The one-day shadowing is a benefit, but kids certainly can do that on their arm. And with that, I'm going to pass out my questions to everybody on the board and, of course, the principal, and also Michael Semic and anybody else that's at the table over there, so perhaps you can answer my questions, which were not answered when I did send a FOIA and asked for it with my FOIA request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Thorne. Yes, sir. Could you just give a second for Mrs. Thorne to finish passing out her papers, please?
My name is Carl Lambrecht. I'm from Highland Park, and I'm doing comparative school analysis. Highland Park is a micro-school. Lake Forest is a micro-school district. Each has a superintendent, several assistant superintendents, then principals, and so far, we haven't gotten to a teacher. I will give you some examples from Highland Park. We spend about $28,000 to educate a child, $6,000 for pension, $1,600 for our recent referendum, and $500 to $1,000 the student spends on his own. Now, the $6,000, the state, whole state pays. That means Highland Park, people in Cairo pay for it. The situation here is that comes out to $36,000, roughly speaking, for each student. Twenty students in a room is $720,000. Let's say you pay a teacher $100,000. Then you support the teacher with $20,000, heat, electricity, and thus, or miscellaneous, you come to $120,000. You have $600,000 left over. That $600,000 is spent on what? Mostly not education, mostly on bureaucracy, and you don't need all that bureaucracy. This is a micro-school. I mean, we have a wonderful superintendent, we've added a wonderful guy as a principal, but you don't need those two positions. You can combine them quite easily and effectively. You must realize that as a community. Some of these things are by Illinois statute. Now, you have a director of communications, she's right here. That costs $100,000 for each school district. Recently, we had put here $50,000 for making a website and improving it. Well, that's a quarter of a million dollars now. Well, the $50,000, I remember in Highland Park back in the 1930s, a group of teach, students were taught how to build a house. You have a lot of education here, and you showed it with your Google information online, that the students could actually make the website themselves, and that would be an education experience. Instead of spending a quarter of a million dollars, you have an education experience. Abraham Lincoln had one year of formal education. You can read what he wrote, and these are just generalized comments from an outsider. But we have to save money. If you don't become efficient and productive, you don't need a director of communications. You have enough communicators up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambrecht. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is Patrick Lupton, and I'd like to address the issue that has come about in about a week and a half. We're, as a neighbor of the high school, we were informed about a week and a half ago that the track needed improvement, and we're all in favor of improving the track. I have, my three children all ran track, and I believe in it very, as a great discipline. We went to the meeting at the high school, was accompanied by other members, and all of a sudden, bam, a bomb dropped. Oh, by the way, the track will be improved. We're all for that. Oh, by the way, the park that has been grandfathered, that has been dedicated to the neighborhood, to the high school, to the children in the community, that we're going to dig a five-foot hole. Entire park will be destroyed, removed as a drainage situation. This was a week and a half ago, and so what has happened is a violation of trust. This, I'm sure, had been in discussion since January or the year before that, and then all of a sudden, we're going to bam and move this along. It's a four, to my understanding, it's a $4 million project. I understand the Board of Education voted on this. This was the old board, and the new board has been in a situation of limbo where we really don't know about this, we didn't know about that in our conversations of the past week. So we, this, our little committee of the neighborhood had a scramble to find out what exactly is going on, and what is, there is also rumors of an artificial turf football field coming in, but, you know, no, that is the real reason for the drainage into the park. The park is a micro-school. It's a micro-school district. The park is also, would be considered, in many scientific reports that we've reviewed in this last week, as a health hazard. And especially the concept of drainage, Niles, the Nile virus and so on. But, you know, this is, this is not how a community, high school, works with the community and establish trust. And a trust is so important today. We all depend on it greatly when we come to a stop sign. We trust that the person behind, on the other side, is going to stop, and we all work together. And this is, once again, we're in a situation where you're going to do what we say, and this is what it's going to be, and we're going to spend $4 million because we need two extra lanes in our track. So, I will be happy to close right now, but I just would like to see some common sense and also maybe the best direction right now until we get all the facts out, have it all studied properly, that we maybe postpone this venture of tearing apart a community park, which we'll never get back again, and also this idea that we have to have eight lanes instead of six lanes. And there was a little conversation that the first meet that we have will probably cost like $58,000 to have a meet because of the investment that has been made. And that's, in this time of serious consideration of the budgets, I think it should be a situation that let's postpone it, let's take our time. We know in the history of the district where things have gone awry building an extra high school and that sort of thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Joe Novicki. I lived in Lake Forest for 27 years. We don't have any children, but if I did, I would have, it would have been great to have them go to Lake Forest. We've got a lot of neighbors and friends that we've watched their children go through Lake Forest, and it's a great high school. But I've got to talk about a couple of things that maybe you should think about before you move forward with digging a five-foot pit. There are numerous children that live in this neighborhood. They're on bicycles, they're walking around. Who's going to cover the safety of this? Who's going to keep children out of a five-foot pit when it fills with water? How do they stay out of this pit? What about the mosquitoes? This is an opportunity for a lot of you who are new to the board, new superintendents, and new management in the high school district, to step forward and try and at least involve the community. And when I talk about the community, I talk about just the neighborhood. I look at you as Godzilla, a good Godzilla, but not Godzilla, and when your footprint moves around, you disturb a lot of people. We live on Ravine Park Drive. We have 131 cars in the morning that go in front of our house to go to the high school to drop kids off. Nobody wants to address this. Try and drive around from a safety standpoint around the high school, on Edgewood, Ravine Park Drive, or the other parts of the, the other streets. You can't get by picking up and dropping off kids. There's kids walking around the neighborhood. I, the trust has just been gone between past administrations and what we have to live with in the neighborhood. We love the high school. We actually, a lot of us miss the football games. It's terrible to sit out in the fall and rake our leaves and listen to the game and go over at halftime and support the school. It was always great. It was a lot of fun. Go over and watch a track meet, but now, all of a sudden, we're coming forward and there's another situation where there's going to be a five-foot pit in the neighborhood, and who's going to take care of the safety of the children? And we really would like somehow, some way, that the school district would reach out more to their surrounding neighborhood and try and help us with not only the other problems I talked about, but how can we effectively make this safe for all of us? There's probably a way to build this and do this that could be wonderful for nature. We're worried about the kids. There's too many of them running around the neighborhood that you can't control. So, if you could please keep that in mind as you move forward before just digging a hole, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the board at this time? Could you please, could you please step to the podium so that you can be heard for the video recording? And state your name and your address, please.
My name's Lisa Bennett. I've lived here most of my life. I'm a small business owner in town. I do not have children, but I have wonderful dogs. And we like the park, and we will miss the park. But the whole climate, the way it was presented where it was presented, I had no notification. I live five houses away from the high school. I had no notification about the Tuesday night meeting. Luckily, my brother lives across the street from it, so he told me. I didn't make it to that meeting. I was sure that I would make it to this meeting because we only, we had no notice. You know, we didn't know about this project. Nothing was presented to the community. Nothing was presented to the high, to the neighborhood around the high school. It just was, this is what we're doing. We're starting Friday morning. They didn't start Friday morning, but I guess it was because so many people wanted to have a voice. I just appreciate it. If people don't want to speak up here, just everybody who agrees with what's been, that this is their concern about our little park, stand up and be counted. That's why we're all here.
My name is Carol Bus. I live at 319 Ravine Park Drive, across from the park. We also didn't get a, a notice of the first meeting. And I guess my concern, as Pat mentioned, is trust. I mean, you're the school board, and when people, you know, in the community hear our, our needs, they say, "Well, you, you moved to the, near the high school. You knew the high school was there." But we didn't know that the high school board would do whatever they wanted, they didn't, that you have no accountability, you don't have any setback requirements, as all of us do. If we want to put a swing set, we have requirements, but you can put a fence five feet from an adjoining neighbor and, and a pit right next to it with small children nearby, and it's okay without any notification. You just do this in secret. And I guess my question is, is this, is this contract let? And I, can we, can you answer this question? Have you already let this contract? And who is requiring you to put this detention pond in? And on what basis? How many, how many square feet of hardscape is required to have so many feet of a detention pond? And I'd like those answers because I, everybody says, "Well, we need it," but who's requiring it? And why is there no notice to anyone? You're not a good neighbor, so, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, in the back, please.
How are you doing? My name's Kurt Utterbeck, and I live on Edgewood, and nice to see all my neighbors here. We all had children over the last 20 years that have all grown up, and the neighborhood has cycled again, and there's a plenty of young children between three to seven, eight years old in the neighborhood. I don't know anything about it. I heard it yesterday. I'm here to find information. So, rather than pick at all sorts of things I don't know anything about, I'd really like to know what's going on there. I was not notified. I do know that they do make retention ponds that are underground, so not necessarily would it have to be above ground. And I'm also disappointed that in 1991, when you redid the high school, you took the park swing sets and stuff out for the kids. It was promised to come back, and it was never returned to the park. So, could you put a water park in there with the swing sets and stuff? You know, and a little water and a guard? But I think the real concern of everybody here is, you know, I do a lot of fishing and different things, and putting water, and, you know, it could be one that's a dry retention pond where it fills up temporarily and it empties out. So, it's only a temporary thing. Is it one that's going to sit there, be full of water and mosquitoes and diseases that we don't want? Is it easier for you to go ahead and dig 20 feet down and put 100,000 gallon retention pond underground and leave the park? I have no idea, but I know that those are all things that are being done today, and I think everybody here is concerned because I really agree, I think the gist is, is that something above ground, holding water, is hazardous to the neighborhood. I really think that's what we're talking about. But I don't think, you know, if you make a, a, a retention pond that empties, and it's only one of the big deluges where my basement fills up, I can understand it would have water, and the kids aren't going to be playing out there, or they might. But we need more information as a neighborhood on what's going in there and what could possibly be done for a benefit, because there's a lot of brilliant minds here and there that work with everybody to accomplish things like the high school's done with all the kids. I just think that we feel let down by not having any information until yesterday, for me. I don't know enough to help out or see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Alfred Tommocelli. I live on Willow Street. I'm a neighbor of the high school as well. I don't have anything prepared to say this evening, but I can tell you that there's a great deal of concern, and it's authentic, and it's aimed at the welfare of not only the children who are not of high school age, but also of the high school students as well. There are a lot of technical aspects to the decision that was made as far as implementation of this retention pond, some of which deal with the hydrostatics and how they might affect the rest of the houses on the block. I understand that the remediation is to relieve some of the flooding that's been occurring in the basement of the high school, and it's certainly something that needs to be adequately addressed. But I think I can echo some of the remarks that have been made this evening, that more thorough investigation of alternatives that can fit into the budget constraints that I know are a reality for the school district ought to be considered, and I would like to see reopening of some discussion as to how the community as a whole can approach this concern and collectively come to an agreement that is of mutual benefit. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the board? No, okay. I think just as a very quick response, all of the questions I don't think can or should be answered here, I would say that I appreciate all of you being here and expressing as politely as you have your concerns about this. This is a project that has been under evaluation for the better part of the last two years. It began under the Diamond Campaign that was being proposed by the Booster Club and was very widely publicized and very openly discussed by this board in this room. There's nothing about this that has been a secret or withheld from the community in any way. The stormwater management, Lake County Stormwater Management is the entity that dictates how stormwater must be managed within the property lines of the property-making capital improvements such as the track improvement, as I understand it. I also understand that there are future meetings or a future meeting planned, which notice should be going out or has gone out to the community, or Mr. Albus?
To reiterate some of what you said, there was a follow-up meeting last week with some of the neighbors where we spent a lot of time going through the county stormwater requirements, and those are administered by the city. So, our engineers have been working very closely with the city. The redesign of the track means that the stormwater management needs to be brought up to code. There is no stormwater management there now. That's why some of the backyards tend to flood. This is not, I keep hearing the term pond. This is a detention area. The one gentleman had talked about, and he was spot on, that after a heavy rain, some water will collect in there and then percolate into the ground or, in a controlled way, be released into the infrastructure in the area. One of the neighbors, in fact, is Mr. Lupton, who is directly to the north, was not able to attend the meeting last week, so we tried to set up a meeting for tomorrow, and I believe we're scheduled for 11 o'clock. So, we can expand that because I've heard a lot of things said tonight that we can go through and kind of walk through what we did last week about what the county requirements are, what the options were, and how the engineers arrived at where they're at. So, the meetings at the high school will probably have to change the room location, but at 11 o'clock. But if you come to the front door, then we can figure out, we'll have a place designated by then. Be happy to meet and go through all the questions that were asked tonight.
Thank you. And I think for those of you who may be curious about what these detention areas are, if you drive to the north end of Lake Bluff where the new elementary school, relatively new elementary school is located, there are at least two of these detention areas on either side of that school, and I think you're absolutely correct that they consume a lot of otherwise usable area, but it is a necessity that's imposed on the school that these detention areas be in place in order to manage within the property boundaries the stormwater before it enters the storm sewer system. And it's imposed on the district. So, I hope that all of you who have these concerns will take advantage of the opportunity to meet with Mr. Albus. I hope that you'll take the opportunity to go to other places where these things exist, including at an elementary school that teaches kindergarten through fifth graders, so it is nothing but full of small children, and the way they manage those spaces and ensure the safety of those kids. So, thank you for being here again.
For those of you who are attending the meeting, there's a meeting tomorrow at 11 at Lake Forest High School, but I, we do want to commit to not just one meeting, but to process this as necessary so that concerns and interests are addressed. We absolutely do want to be a good neighbor to all of you, not to some of you, and if you're not able to attend tomorrow, we'll find ways to arrange meetings where you are able to attend. And Mr. Albus is your point of contact on this information. He works with a construction management company and the architect to address these things.
If there's no further public participation, we'll move on on our agenda. I'm not sure if everybody here wishes to stay for the rest of the action items, but we can take a minute and let the room clear a little bit if you'd like. Mr. Reimer, please come out where we can see you now that there are seats available for you. I don't believe that we have any additional reports and discussion for this evening. We move on to board committees, which I addressed in my president's report. There have been no committee meetings since our last board meeting, and the committees are in the process of being formed as we speak, and by the next meeting, we should, I believe there's actually a finance and operations committee meeting being scheduled for the early part of July.
July 9th is actually the target date, Mr. President, right now, although I don't believe we've heard back from all the potential participants. You have to know whether that date works, but it's, it's the current target date.
Thank you.
There are some ordinances, I believe on the city's end, that have to change, but it's our goal. We think we will be able to get there over the course of this next year, with them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members on this? If not, can I have a motion for the approval of this contract?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve the waste recycle contract renewal.
Second. Is there any further discussion? If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion is carried. Moving on, we have approval of budget transfers. Ms. Hermes, please.
Good evening, everyone. Before you tonight, we do have the 2012-2013 budget transfers, and to just kind of present that at a high level, this is a process that we use to make adjustments to our budget during the course of the year. It doesn't affect the net expense or net revenue of the district. We use this for primarily two reasons. One is for grant funds. When we set our budget, we don't necessarily have all of the allocated grant dollars. Grants may not be set by either the state or federal level, so we do like to try to match the specific line items to the approved grants when those come through, so you do see transfers for that reason. The other reason we use them is departmentally. These are always with accounts that the department set originally, and it might be that they were going to buy a particular piece of equipment, anticipated it might be $2,500, which would hit our capital threshold, which would be in an equipment account. If it came in at $2,200, it would actually need to be under a supply by the rules that we are governed by. So you would see transfers between purchase services, equipment, repairs and maintenance. Those type of things are the things that we have before you tonight. School code does allow for such a transfer. Historically, we keep those during the course of the year and only present them to the board at the end versus coming every single meeting with one or every couple with a few. So they are before you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Board members, any questions? If not, may I have a motion to approve the budget transfers as they've been presented?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve the budget transfers as presented.
Is there any further discussion? If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. The motion is carried. Moving on to approval of the CLIC liability insurance contract renewal. And again, Ms. Hermes?
Thank you. I guess that Lake Forest High School does participate, is a part of CLIC, which is the collective liability insurance co-op. We are in that co-op with 172 other school districts. Now, this does represent 814 schools, so it's a fairly large, basically a purchasing cooperative. It is governed by representatives from our neighboring communities. They actually sit on the board that manages this pool. What we have before you tonight is the renewal for a variety of items, but property casualty, student accident, those various things. And there's just a couple of things I want to point out, because I do have the entire 96-page renewal, if anyone is interested. But I want to talk a little bit about how the co-op works. They actually do go out to market every single year, much broader than Alan or I could do individually, and they basically use our economy of scale. Like I said, we represent a lot of districts and a lot of schools. We don't go out every single year on every single component, so for instance, this year for student accident insurance, they bid that competitively out to 12 different vendors. On the other hand, the boiler machinery, we locked in a three-year rate on that last year, so that wouldn't come up necessarily for renewal this year. All in all, there was 27 vendors solicited as part of this entire renewal, basically in their areas of specialty. We do recommend that you approve the renewal tonight in the amount of $149,000. This is a premium increase of 9.38. And as you can see, we did have an increase in our loss fund as well. Two things from the co-op, and I did attach the summary for your review that was noted during this year's renewal. One is that we are seeing an increase in claims among school districts that go further back in time. So we're seeing claims on, you know, sexual harassment, we're seeing EEOC, we're seeing age discriminations that might go back a little further in time, so we're trying to retain some of those funds that normally would be redistributed back to schools, you know, as a certain statute of limitations have extended. The second thing that we're anticipating is with, we do have some parallel to the new para and SB 7 rules that you've been hearing Dr. Cooley and others talk about, because we do believe that we will see an increase in those type of claims as maybe we have decreasing enrollment, or we also have a reduction force based on those new rules. We anticipate there could be some claim on those as well. Also coupled with the property casualty, we also cover, as you know, many of our students do travel overseas on various exchange programs, so we do carry a little bit of a foreign liability package that's in there. That's a renewal of $1,075, and an additional fiduciary liability policy is in that same renewal as well. I'm happy to share any of the details of the 96-page doc if anybody would like more information.
Six copies should be enough, because I'm good. If there are any questions about this renewal?
I have a quick question. Is, do we share in those liabilities equally across the 800-and-some-odd schools depending on the claims?
It's actually kind of a banding formula, so it is, it has a little bit to do with what your experience has been, and then they are layered. So there's individual responsibility. For instance, our excess is layered into four pieces, so there is individual responsibility, but then we are covered as an aggregate, as a group, to try to mitigate some of those impacts.
So from a training perspective, I think you mentioned sexual harassment, EEOC, are all the schools going through the same level of training?
Everybody, we do loss control, all the best practices that you would put into place, we try to stay very much on top of, which is also why we think it's very important that we keep representation of very similar districts to ourselves on that governing board. So you'll see, we do have a representative from Stevenson High School and Highland Park and Deerfield, because we want everyone to maintain their facilities like we maintain our facilities. We want everyone to institute those training policies like we institute our training policies, so we do stay on top of those things.
And everybody attests that they've gone through the appropriate training kind of thing?
Alan, might be better to answer that question, if he was paying attention.
The co-op, it's very similar to the health insurance co-op as well. They make services available. Some districts do not avail themselves of that, but that's where the experience factor and the banding factors come into play. The overarching philosophy on these is to smooth costs out over time, so you don't have the big spikes and the big lows. And again, it's a very similar model to what we employ with our health insurance. But no, there is not a mandatory sign-off for every training that's available in either co-op.
Are there any other questions for either Ms. Hermes or Mr. Albus? If not, can I have a motion for the approval?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve the CLIC liability insurance contract renewal as presented.
Just a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, may I please have a roll call?
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion carries. I think if you just hit the rewind button and can do that all over again, but insert the words "workers' compensation" where you had liability before.
You can, it very much still applies. We're with 133 school districts as part of CLIC on the workers' comp portion, and you can see from the renewal, while we are still, our modification factor is still better than average. A modification factor of one is kind of the average. We're at .95. We did not have a stellar year, so our modification factor went from .89 to .95, which is part of that banding type issue we need to take on a little bit more based on our most recent experience. The renewal in front of you is 8.6%, an increase of about $15,000 on a $188,000 policy.
And how much of that is in loss fund as opposed to fixed cost or premium roughly? I can't get this to open here.
The fixed cost for 1314 is $23,200.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the workers' compensation insurance approval? If not, can I have a motion for the approval of the workers' comp renewal, please? And may I please have a roll call?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion carries. I think if you just hit the rewind button and can do that all over again, but insert the words "workers' compensation" where you had liability before.
You can, it very much still applies. We're with 133 school districts as part of CLIC on the workers' comp portion, and you can see from the renewal, while we are still, our modification factor is still better than average. A modification factor of one is kind of the average. We're at .95. We did not have a stellar year, so our modification factor went from .89 to .95, which is part of that banding type issue we need to take on a little bit more based on our most recent experience. The renewal in front of you is 8.6%, an increase of about $15,000 on a $188,000 policy.
And how much of that is in loss fund as opposed to fixed cost or premium roughly? I can't get this to open here.
The fixed cost for 1314 is $23,200.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the workers' compensation insurance approval? If not, can I have a motion for the approval of the workers' comp renewal, please? And may I please have a roll call?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the Illinois Bone and Joint Institute trainer's contract renewal. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Burgner. My laptop is a little slow coming up. I believe this is going to Mr. Albus. There's a good deal of detail that I've asked his background on this. Should the board members have some questions about that from Athletic Director Tim Burkhalter and the rationale for it and whatnot, but your questions may already be satisfied with Mr. Albus's comments, so we'll see.
About two and a half years ago, we had a trainer employed by the district, and that person quit during the course of the year. It's very hard to replace once you're underway. And Tim looked at a variety of options and settled on the Illinois Bone and Joint Institute that matched the costs that we were paying that employee. It actually worked out better for us, because we saved the benefit costs, but then what Tim found was that the resource of having Illinois Bone and Joint Institute behind that trainer, there were benefits. There are also benefits that if that person were sick, or if that person decided to leave, Illinois Bone and Joint would provide the replacement. So it's been a good pairing. I have one question for Tim that I did not get answered. We have a combination of some trainers employed by the district and then the contract here. I think that may have to do with their expertise or the sport. I'd have to follow up with Tim on that. The contract, I don't believe, has changed in the two and a half years. It's been static at the $25,000, which is 1,000 hours.
Thank you. Are there any questions concerning this contract?
I just had one quick one. Do we have a representative from IBJI that attends every athletic event?
I don't know that it's every athletic event, but they're scheduled for the 1,000, yes.
Certainly historically for the, what you might consider the high-contact events, there is, and I agree with that.
I'm not sure that, for instance, for a golf tournament or those kinds of things, that we would have them there, but certainly for football and activities of that nature, lacrosse, what have you, I believe they're always there.
I can comment on this as well. Mr. Burkhalter provided a great deal of information regarding this. There are some sports that require an athletic trainer to be at the site. High-incidence sports, football, wrestling, gymnastics cannot be unattended, we must have a trainer there. Wrestling in particular is special because it is the only sport with an injury time limit, so someone has to evaluate the injury and determine whether the athlete can continue within 90 seconds or less. In addition, there are athletic trainers available at all of our athletic events, no matter where they occur. They might be at east or west campus and drive back and forth, but for all events, we have someone available. This is particularly true when it's related to whether an athlete can safely return to play. It's outside of the normal scope of practice for emergency personnel to make any of those decisions, so our athletic trainers are there. In addition, there's a standard level of care. He gives some detail there about comparable schools. Glenbrook South has three full-time athletic training, athletic trainers. North has two. Nutria has four. Stevenson, two plus three contracted. Deerfield has two. Our coaches are also aware that they are there to ask the host athletic trainer in case one of our athletes needs care, and that our visiting schools expect the same standard of care when they come to our facility. There's a good deal more here.
On any given weekday or weekend, sporting day, there could be, like, for example, here at West Campus, three to four different sports going on at the facility, so a trainer or trainers would be covering multiple sports going from field to field. There's walkie-talkies at every field, so a trainer could be reached and arrive at that field in seconds or minutes.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, may I have a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve the IBJI contract renewal as presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, we have approval of a copier contract. Ms. Hermes?
All right, hopefully a quick and easy one. We do have a multifunctional copier at the high school. This actually expired in June of 2012. However, with one machine, we didn't figure we had a lot of leverage to go out and secure the best price. We negotiated to just have a month-to-month lease on that machine until we could couple it with what we thought at the time was five machines from District 67, which were expiring at the end of this year. Instead, we made an arrangement with five other schools or four other schools in Lake County. They, we agreed to provide them our specs because they liked them, and they agreed to actually facilitate the RFP process, so thank you, kudos to Deerfield 109, who stepped up and actually ran the request for proposal to seek quotes for copier services for all of these districts. The RFP was issued in February. We had seven vendors respond. The three top responders that best met our needs are listed in your recommendation. I won't go through them. Bottom line, I think the process worked. We ended up with better machines and at a lower cost. So the annual estimated lease and click fee is $5,550 on this particular machine, and that's a reduction of $1,892 from our current piece, so.
Terrific result. Are there any questions about this contract?
I'd like to make a comment, and I made this comment pretty recently again, but I'd like to thank you for the level of rigor and succinct information you provide the board on decisions of this nature. You always seem to have a knack for including everything, at least that seems important to me, and Mr. Simic and I have had a couple of conversations, I think, at least obliquely touching on the kind of information I think it's important to present to the board in order for the board to be in a position to make informed decisions, and I find you consistently do that, so I'd like to say thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
My colleagues tell me it's gonna be kind of hard to vote it down now, but.
First, we need a motion. May I have a motion, please? In a second. Any further discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen? Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion is carried.
Next, we move on to approval of the EdTech consulting contract renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Burgner. We've got a number of background documents related to the continuation of Mr. DeBeau's contract, to be clear, also known as EdTech Solutions contract renewal for the coming year. Now, a couple of comments on this is, our all-in cost for Mr. DeBeau's is $93,117. He replaced a gentleman named Gary Pickens, who is now at the ROE. And based on the day that we're able to collect from other high schools around us, the kind of work that Mr. DeBeau's does, were we not contracting with him, would estimate our cost at about $178,000. If Mr. DeBeau's were an employee rather than a contracted, a contractor for us, his base salary would be $55,000. And so, Mrs. Hermes has a good deal more information about the value that Mr. DeBeau's adds to the organization. One of those things that we discussed earlier was, Mr. DeBeau's is the only person, is this correct, in our organization that actually understands how all of our various systems communicate with each other. Is that correct?
That is, and as I mentioned earlier, I mean, I think we have a wonderful tech department over at the high school, but to some extent, we really have specialists. You know, some are student, you know, database management specialists. Some are network specialists. Cornelius, right now, is the only person, I think, that really has the grasp. And that's easily recognized at the high school because everyone wants to, you know, if you want to know the answer, ask Cornelius. He really built the structure for shared services on technology. So, the wireless that you see, the fiber optics, the, all the shared components that we have, we do share servers, we do share a phone system, a lot of those things. Cornelius was in on those from the ground up. So, I do believe that his service is invaluable. I have other information if you want to just, let me know how deep you would like me to go or how late you would like to stay, either way.
One question for Mr. Simic, I suppose. Succession planning is something that you take very seriously. And I recognize that Mr. DeBeau's is very valuable to the organization, but it is concerning to think that were something to happen to him, there would be a lack of continuity in that overarching view. Are there efforts underway to enhance someone's role to be more all-inclusive?
To my knowledge, at this point, one of the things that, let me back up for a moment. One of the things that occurred in the course of this coming to the board and a number of the questions that were raised related to Mr. DeBeau's. What does he do? Good deal of digging on that. I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Hermes for providing really a substantial amount of detail behind what Mr. DeBeau's does on a daily basis that is invisible to the public, I mean, completely invisible to the public, and actually not visible to most of our staff. And the wireless infrastructure, our wide area network, our voice system, our consolidated network, the RFP for our website, these are things that Mr. DeBeau's really has a handle on. And as far as I know, we do not currently have someone that has his depth of understanding. And he's gonna be with us for one to two more years maximum, I understand. Is that correct, Mrs. Hermes?
That is. I mean, we have had discussions regarding succession planning. We do have some very talented individuals. Could we grow someone? And would they actually desire this position is really kind of another question. So, we've talked about it very recently, and I do believe Cornelius maybe would be willing to work a few more years. But this is, I think, very concerning. We do have some other staff on, at the high school that I do think could fill behind if others would choose to elevate, which I think is encouraging. We've been working some things with them in regards to professional development, encouraging them to take courses, enhancement certifications, so that we could position ourselves. But right now, I don't know if I necessarily could say that someone could step up and do it.
As a further comment to that, and speaking as, I think, the longest-tenured member of the board, maybe the most senior member of the board as well, I'm not sure. There's been a number of discussions over the years about the opportunity for shared services here, and I don't mean with 67. There've been discussions with the city that I was a part of going back, oh, quite a, five years or so ago. There's been, there's some level of discussion with the college. You know, there are a number of institutions in the community that require similar types of services, maybe not quite as complex as ours, but it just seems to me an area that's ripe for further pursuit of that, especially with Mr. DeBeau's relatively short timeframe. So, I think succession planning should include that possibility as well as opposed to just continuing on with the current template of having our own independent IT department.
Correct. There are a lot of different options, too. You know, we could also explore in, you know, with Mr. Rogers, and I still have fun saying that. If he was still here, you know, too, we might pursue more of it even in instructional technology director, and then maybe we could backfill with just some infrastructure and hardware support. So, there are a lot of configurations, and I think as he starts to build his team over there and look at what the needs and wants of the building are, you know, a lot of things will pop up, too.
Jen, can you talk about how the goals are set for that department and how they map back to sort of the larger strategy? And did we meet them this year?
Yeah, I'm not the goals expert at the high school. I wish Jed Knight were here tonight because she could do it much more eloquently than I could. But basically, the goals are really from the board goals. And from there, individual departments and department heads, department chairs, all work on their goals to support those mission and visions. From there, I really see technologies in the supporting role. It's not leading necessarily a initiative or a goal or a charge, but more of the philosophy of if they can, you know, dream it, if they can conceive it, then our charge is to say, okay, we can make that work, and here's how. We've done a lot of work, I think, through the referendum and even extending beyond that to make sure that our infrastructure is ready to support some of that. Because you can dream up the most amazing things, and if I'm doing dial-up here, it's not gonna happen. And we did that with the fiber and with our internal network. But primarily, we take the, we take kind of the supporting role. They've done some pilots this year with different things, with ebooks. We're involved with that on them. So, really, the projects are following really the educational instructional process, which I think is the right order necessarily. I don't think individually, I don't think we, you know, say, how many help desk tickets are we gonna close? And those type of things. It's how do we best, provide the best support to whatever the instructional program needs. And that may look different from department to department or teacher to teacher.
While we're on the topic, Mr. President, I'd like to make one more comment, and that is regarding infrastructure. There is one area of telecommunications broadly that goes beyond just the educational mission of the district, and we're living that right now. We at one time envisioned the capability to broadcast live these board meetings. I think it would be a great benefit to the community if we could. As we went through the 2006 referendum project, we chewed up funds on other areas and had to sacrifice that one as our balance sheet, so to speak, continues to improve. I really would encourage the rest of my board members and Mr. Simic to consider making those expenditures at the appropriate time in the future so that we can indeed better communicate with our public.
Yes, it certainly wasn't a technology issue. It was a funding issue, allocation of funds, because certainly we could do it.
And going along with most of the IT hardware and software inputs, don't the vendors provide support to, at least in the initial?
Yes and no. We do initial training. It depends what it is. If you can, and I'm not sure if they've seen the document that I prepared, but we probably have 20 or 30 different applications that really touch a lot of different areas at the high school. So, it might be they provide initial training, but anything after that, we pretty much maintain on our own. I'll give you an example of our financial software system. You know, that's one of the systems that Cornelius helps us, helps us maintain and keep active. We put on our own updates. We do those type of things. If any things, you know, large scale, of course, we're gonna tap into the vendor that provided the service. But on a day-to-day basis or even a month-to-month basis, it's really not the vendors providing a lot of the support.
Okay, and also.
Unless I missed your question, but.
Partially. And also, you had mentioned staff member. If we had a staff member, you had two different cost breakdowns.
Yes, so there are, the comps that Mrs. Hermes did for neighboring districts, that estimate was 178, 178,000. And what we did is we took the Cornelius's contract, which is 93,000 roughly, and then backed out FICA, IMRF, which is required, a healthcare plan, a fringe benefit that all employees have. That leaves us with a base salary, employee of $55,000. So, one of the things that occurs with contractors is the, you might see a number that looks like a pretty sizable number, but that is the all-in cost. The $93,000 is the all-in cost. Whereas if we framed it as we're going to hire a $55,000 tech person, it would look very, very different because the number is so much smaller. When you look at all those other expenditures that we have on top of that, it appears different.
In the interest of completeness, I would point out that that represents half of Mr. DeBeau's contract. He's a shared service contractor, if you will.
Actually, his contract.
Sixty-seven and 115.
That is not half of his. Sixty-seven actually hired an instructional technology director a year or so ago, and so they actually contracted for just a portion, a different portion of Mr. DeBeau's time.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize.
So, their contract is completely different.
And do you know what that portion is?
For this year, I think it's 39,000, because he's.
So, in effect, it is almost a shared services position with it being roughly 135,000?
Well, it's a common contractor. He provides different services in each district because of the arrangement that 67 has with another tech person.
And how does, just out of curiosity, how does he stay cutting-edge or on top of, you know, industry developments? Because it is a very fast-moving.
I think the same way that hopefully most of us do. I mean, he's got his own network. He's got colleagues. They have groups. It's been a great joy this year that he's partnered with Judy Epke at District 67. Judy is more recently out of the classroom and, again, is involved in some of those same professional organizations. You can check out his website. He talks a little bit about those type of things. He keeps an active blog. He does his own research. So, kind of hopefully what most of us are doing in our learning.
Any further questions? If not, may I have a motion for the approval of the EdTech consulting contract, please?
Second.
If we haven't exhausted discussion, any further? Roll call, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen? Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of Kathleen O'Hara's consulting contract. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Burgner. Have to get to it here. For Kathy O'Hara, Dr. Cooley and Mr. Thiel can add a good deal. This is another item on which we did a sizable amount of background looking after some inquiries into that. And in particular, one of the questions was, to what degree does Mrs. O'Hara provide a service that is confidential or requiring confidentiality that could not be performed by other forms, volunteers in particular? And Dr. Cooley, you've got some background on that and other things?
Yes, Mr. Simic. In your board packet, you received a document that is an end-of-year report that Kathy O'Hara regularly completes and submits to the superintendent and principal each year. That's a four-page document of the various activities summary-wise that she's engaged in throughout the course of the year. Her primary function is to coordinate the Office of Student and Community Service, which is a very, very active area in our school. As Mr. Simic just said, she is working with students to enhance their high school experience. So, it requires her working closely with students to understand what their needs might be, what would make their experience a more well-rounded experience? How could potential community service or internships, job shadowing, those kinds of things, make the picture more complete for our students while they're here and also through the college application process? She does look at a number of scholarships as well. She was instrumental in bringing the Rotary Scholarship back to Lake Forest that had been dormant for a while. And that requires her to get information about students and their needs and their academic aspirations and things like that. So, she is, uses our PowerSchool system, again, a confidential tool, to help her do some of the things that I just mentioned. Kathy has brought a lot of value added to the position. This would be the eighth year. Hopefully, that she'll be coordinating that office. Many of the things weren't coordinated at all prior to. We didn't have the online system that kids could keep track of their service hours, which makes the application process much more smoothly in terms of their college applications. She's expanded the clubs. She directly supervises three clubs herself, but the wide variety of clubs that we have at Lake Forest do service themselves. So, they might not be a service-oriented club, but then they'll do a service activity from time to time. So, they always look to Kathy. Dave, you had mentioned a question about goal-setting, that kind of thing. And in terms of Kathy's office, that occurs with the principal at the end of the year. Where are we, where are we right now? How do we end the year? How should we go forward? And it does tie into the board initiatives generally because it would fall into the area of emotional wellness, which is a standing goal that we have to, again, look at the whole child experience. Mr. Thiel, I don't know if you would want to add anything to that?
Well, I think her long number of years working in the community, Lake Bluff, her experience and connections with the community and organizations has really been a benefit to help students with service projects and service activities that she's been able to bring those connections to the high school. She's definitely enhanced all of our service clubs within the high school, but also reached out along with Dr. Griffith, for example, the CBO, which is College Bound Opportunities, which is Highland Park, Deerfield and Lake Forest High School, a nonprofit organization that helps low-income families provide financial aid as well as a mentor for college-bound students. And we've been the new participant with Highland Park and Deerfield for that, and Kathy's been the liaison with that group. And we've had several students each year participate, and it's an excellent program in that it not only helps them with the college process, it helps them through the college process. It's mentoring through their four years of college, as well as the Open Doors Job Shadow Program that Kathy has been instrumental in developing, as well as what Julie had said, the Rotary. So, she has these connections and really done a very nice job out of the building as well as in the building. She also works closely with the counseling department, as Julie said, with the scholarships, and also is very involved with parent meetings. When we have them, she will come to represent the service opportunities. And she even works, I work, you know, in there in the summer. She comes around and still working in the summer trying to create opportunities and connections. So, she's been a great resource for these opportunities for students.
So, our all-in cost for Mrs. O'Hara for this work is $53,000. One of the things that you mentioned, Dr. Cooley, is the degree to which students are able to track their hours. And this feeds directly into their ability to put those on their college applications. And volunteerism is a wide and deep tradition in the community, and this is actually a process that she has formalized then. And also, it contains a good deal of confidential information. Is that correct?
It does. It definitely does.
It does. It definitely does. Our students logged over fourteen thousand, about fourteen and a half, uh, thousand hours, um, this year. And I asked Kathy, "What was that like?", you know, several years ago, five years ago or something. She said it, it hovered, you know, well, well under ten thousand. So, um, not only having the system be able to coordinate that, that allows students to capture things, remember things, all four years of, of their service and build a service record, um, that wasn't possible before. You know, students might forget, you know, all of those kinds of things, but it definitely has brought this to the forefront, and, um, families and students really rely on Kathy to find just the right match of an opportunity. It's just not about logging hours. It's about doing something meaningful that suits who you are as a person, as, um, I think Kathy's forte.
I, I think that's a good point, that she's really clarified what service opportunities are and service hours in bringing clarity to not just being on an organization or helping at the church, but, uh, doing a project that is really true service work and bringing quality to the service work. Uh, as we talked about, that clarity for college applications, uh, they want to see not only that you were involved, but what activities. And she's made it, uh, very easy for the students to log those hours, put them into Naviance, which automatically goes on their college application. So the process has really been streamlined.
I'm sorry to belabor perhaps some of these points for our board members that are more veteran and have been through this a number of times, but one of the things that is the method of the madness here today is a number of things could be on a con, uh, consent agenda. We're going to go through these so that we have an opportunity to discuss their questions that board members have asked, and, uh, want to share those with, with everyone, uh, on this occasion. And so, uh, in coming years, it might not be necessary, but, but this time, this first time through especially, it's just so new and to our board members' tenures, we're taking some time to go through these one by one.
Yeah, I, I might also mention a couple of other things. Number one, uh, it would be normal and customary, uh, for the Board, uh, Finance and Operations Committee to have previously vetted most of these contractual issues, uh, and, uh, made a recommendation to the Board as a whole, the changeover in board and the timing. That didn't allow for that to happen next times, uh, this time. So, uh, on a, on an ongoing basis, again, for the benefit of the new board members and the community, uh, these types of issues, uh, you know, generally receive an additional level of vetting before they get to the, to the board level. Secondly, though, Mrs. Thorne's comments earlier on this very subject brought to mind an issue that I, I have to confess, I don't know where it now stands, uh, Mr. Burgner and Mr. Simick. Uh, there was discussion, uh, a number of months ago, and I thought consensus that we would make available, uh, copies of the board packet, uh, to the general public, uh, ahead of the board meeting. I don't know where that stands, but, Mrs. Thorne, just so you know, a number of us had asked questions about this role. I think that the board packet contained a very complete, I think you mentioned, four pages of, uh, background information on the role, what it did, why it did it, why it wasn't appropriate, uh, for a volunteer to do it and this kind of thing. And I just think, uh, we ought to make that same, we ought to put ourselves in a position of being able to make that same, uh, information available to the public on a routine basis.
It's already been done.
Okay. Well, I didn't realize that, but I, I knew it had gotten discussion and I thought it had reached consensus. So thank you. And you say it's already been done. How do they, uh, access that information or-
Uh, I-
Be here at the meeting to get that information?
Oh, no, sir.
How it's accessible on the web, on the website?
Yes, and I haven't gone there myself, so I can't, I can't tell you how it's been done, but, uh, it's a conversation with, uh, Mrs. Fowler, uh, to make that happen. And my understanding, oh, Mrs. Whipple can tell us how to do it.
I'm absolutely happy to tell you how to do it. If you go to the Board of Education section and just check on, on the agenda, um, we have the board reports and videos from the past, and then we also have the board agenda with backup documentation, uh, under the date of the upcoming meeting. So it is all there and has been there for a number of months now.
So what the board sees is what the public sees?
Good. And, and just again, for the community's, uh, knowledge, uh, that packet would generally come out, uh, on a Thursday or a Friday. Hopefully, we, we're trying to make a push more towards Thursdays now, but, uh, prior to the board meeting, but by Friday generally always.
Actually, uh, what we do in that case is we give board members an opportunity to read it and review it, and then we put that out there, um, you know, prior to that. So if there's anything that they see that, you know, that we need to make a modification on, we give ourselves a window of time to do that. Thank you.
Are there any more questions or comments about this contract?
Uh, I have to admit, I'm still very, you know, concerned. I didn't realize, uh, Mrs. Thorne was going to bring it up, and, uh, Mr. Simick and I have had some, uh, discussions about this. But, uh, I do believe the volunteer office, um, really does have a lot of opportunities for volunteerism, and there are, you know, certain confidential sections that, uh, obviously would have to be separated out. But I do think it's an opportunity to, um, you know, for volunteers in the community or the students themselves, um, should have a large part in running this office. So I am concerned. Uh, I know, uh, Mrs. O'Hara has a strong following in the community, uh, you know, especially in Lake Bluff, where she worked as an administrator for many, many years. And, uh, upon retiring from there, I know she did come, you know, to the high school, and it sounds like she has done a wonderful job. But like I said, I think this is definitely an area where we could, um, support volunteerism since that is apparently the, uh, name of the office.
I believe we still need a motion on this, correct? May I have a motion, please? I just asked for a motion. I'm sorry. Second. Is there any further discussion? If not, may I please have a roll call?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin? Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Nay.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. The motion is carried.
Next, we have the approval of Silverpoint Website Addendum. Mrs. Whipple?
As you know, um, the new website, and we're very excited that we'll have portals, uh, secure portals for both of our, our staff and our students as well as our community. Um, as we got into discussions with the technological end, um, as we were working on designs, and I will have to say to you tonight, I'm going to do my very best to channel Cornelius because this is certainly, uh, his area of expertise, not mine. Um, it, it does talk about our databases. So if you'll excuse me, I'm going to read some of, um, his explanation of it, uh, and I, hopefully then I can clarify, um, any of this area. Lake Forest currently stores its user logger information in active databases. And when the two technological groups got together, they realized that there needed to be an additional integration of the district database with Silverpoints. And that is what, um, uh, the technology for connecting the two directories is LDAP or Lightweight Directory Access Protocol. Uh, so it is an area that we believe would be, um, helpful in ease of usership. It syncs and allows for secure connections between Silverpoints databases as well as the districts, and it will allow, uh, students, faculty and staff to use one username and password. And then as they change them throughout the time, uh, it will actually sync and change automatically. Um, in speaking with Cornelius, uh, one of the things that we are looking at as a district is requiring our staff, students and, uh, faculty users to change their usernames and passwords a little more frequently than we do. And so this would certainly, uh, be inv, be a way for it to sync and change automatically and not have to worry about, um, changing the two, uh, simultaneously or having our users do it as well. This was not originally in the contract. It is something that even with this additional addendum keeps us in the low to mid, mid-range of price, and it really does help with ease of u, usership for our constituents that will be on the website. And I will do my very best to answer any technological questions that you have about this, uh, addendum.
Board members, any questions? Any other questions or comments? If not, may-
I have a question. I read this. This is less than a thousand dollars a year addition?
Oh, yes. Yes, it is.
And sixty-seven has already approved it. Is that correct?
They unanimously approved it at their last board meeting.
Did you have something to add, Mr. Simick?
I wanted to ask, uh, Mrs. Snoblin or Mrs. Whipple why they believed that, uh, this was, um, worth the, the, the cost related to the effort that it would take to not have this.
The secure portals will really maintain the internal databases. And for instance, for one of our students, as they sign in, it would be an instant sign-in with a single sign-in and password rather than a sign-in and password and then a secondary sign-in and password. And their portal would include all their classes, their grades. They could customize it to the teams that they're on. So it really will be a, a very robust place that they'll be landing. And what we'd like them to do is get there as easily as possible. So it's, uh, a very easy connection for them as they come and go. And plus, we want to keep the information secure, so we do require a password and login sign-in to those areas.
Thank you. May I, uh, motion, please, for the approval of this contract addendum?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approved the Silverpoint Website Addendum for LDAP as presented.
Is there any further discussion or questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin? Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. Motion is carried.
Next is the approval of school maintenance project grant. Looks like Mr. Alves.
The Illinois State Board of Education is accepting school maintenance grant, uh, applications for up to fifty thousand dollars per district. Some years, this line item is funded by the legislature and some years it is not. If it were funded, I believe the line item cost would be about forty-three million dollars. Uh, we're not sure whether or not the legislature will appropriate the money for next year or not, but we do know that if we don't apply, we can't participate. Um, as you look at the information that's in your packet, I'd like to assure you that the projects that are listed are not new projects. These have been previously identified, and regardless of state action, we will recommend completion at some point in time. But by approving the grant application, we may be able to reduce the net local expense to the district. So therefore, we recommend your approval.
Alan, if I'm reading this correctly, the, um, I will need to sign this application and attest to the idea that these projects have already been presented and approved by the board. And I know that two of the projects on, that are reflected are the next items on the agenda, but I don't recognize items three and four as being things that we've discussed before. Am I just being forgetful or are those on a future agenda?
They will be on a future agenda, and in the past, you did not have to have them approved, um, prior to submission of the grant.
I'm just reading from the second paragraph of the first page of the application. "The governing authority has authorized a school maintenance project during a duly convened meeting."
I think that's the action you're taking tonight. I'm sorry, exactly which line?
The first two or three lines of the second paragraph. "The local Board of Education or other school governing authority has authorized the school maintenance project during a duly convened meeting." I'm, I'm taking that to mean the project to be those items that are listed in the schedule on the second page?
To clarify it, then, what we could do is simply take out items three and four and just go with one and two because those are on the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
Um, and they'll total a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, which is above the threshold.
Okay.
So I'd recommend if there's a motion, then, to approve the grant, um, deleting items three and four.
Are there any other questions about this? Board members?
I have one, just, um, assuming money is available from the state, do they prioritize what kind of, uh, um, projects are, you know, would get grants? Are there like some that are more beneficial? Or is it all-in or all-up kind of thing?
What they've done, that's, that's a good question. What they've done in the past is just require the documentation from districts to collect and how money was spent. Uh, and so most of it is spent on infrastructure needs, but no, they haven't, they haven't paired us against, say, Deerfield, saying this is a more worthy project or not. Each district was entitled to receive up to fifty thousand dollars.
May I have a motion to approve the school maintenance project grant with the deletion of items three and four in the schedule of work items? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? May I please have a roll call?
Mrs. Snoblin? Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye.
Next is the approval of items one and two of the work items listed, the previously approved project grant. Approval of the East Campus Roofing Project Bid. Mr. Alves?
Thank you. As you can see from Carol's memo, bids were opened and advertised in the paper, uh, but the bids were opened on June third. We had multiple vendors submit bids, and the recommendation is to go with exterior construction specialists for Area Twenty as well as Areas Two, Nine and Eleven. In your packet, also is a map of the roof of the high school, and, uh, it should be highlighted to show you the sections of the roof that are being addressed. Uh, the, the maintenance of the roofs in the district has been broken down over the years into sections. And by doing it that way, then, uh, they're actively managed. So as a section wears out or is able to be stretched out longer because of the life, um, we're able to smooth up the cost rather than incurring the replacement of the roof at the school all in one fell swoop, uh, and manage it more in sections. And I think, uh, Carol's done a nice job with this over the years.
Are there any questions, board members? Alan, can you help me understand, has there, can you help explain the, the vast variance among the bids? Is there, is, is the high bidder quoting the same thing? Are they offering additional to, it's three and a half times the size?
No, and when we see spreads like that, normally it makes us uncomfortable and nervous, but Carol has worked with this vendor before and is comfortable with them, so we can go with it. There are times with vendors, um, when they get their summer schedule filling in and they can throw out a number because they're not counting on that project necessarily. can throw out a number, because they're not counting on that project necessarily, they're not as hungry. I don't know if that's at play here. If we had not used them in the past, it would be more of a cause of concern, but because a little bidder is somebody she's used.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, may I have a motion for the approval of the east campus roofing project bid, please?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve the east campus roofing project bid as presented.
Is there a second? There's no further discussion. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen? Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. The motion is carried. Next is the approval of the revised two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen calendar.
Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Burgner. And we've got a number of people that have worked on this, but I'll defer to Mr. Thiel initially on this.
Calendar, the student contact attendance days were made up through, or five days for the strike were through canceling parent-teacher conferences on November eighth, also canceling the next day off, November ninth, and then moving our first semester finals back one day in January, and canceling a work day on after finals. And then the last fifth day was canceling the institute day on April twelfth. We also had a snow day that we were able to take an act of God for the makeup for that.
For the record, I will not be calling snow days ever again.
At least wait for it to start snowing next time. May I have a motion for the approval of the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen calendar, please?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve revised two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, is a roll call required for this? A roll call, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen? Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. The motion is carried. Next is the approval of IASB Board Policy two colon one five zero update, first reading. And I believe the way this motion is presented is to offer an opportunity to waive the first reading and move on to a second reading.
Would you like to address this, Mr. Simic?
Yes, sir. This is, requires one simple change. We recently combined the finance and operations committees, and then it was discovered that our board policy said that we could have no more than two board members that would serve on any given board committee. Need to change that from two to three now.
So do we have a motion for the approval of the second reading of IASB Policy two colon one five zero?
And that, in effect, would approve the policy, right?
Correct.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I have another roll call, please?
Mrs. Snoblen? Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. The motion carries as well.
Next is the approval of mailing equipment lease.
Thank you, Mr. Burgner. This is an item that I will recommend that the board postpone taking action on in the intervening time between when the packet was sent out and today. There's been additional information. Mrs. Hermes, would you care to comment on what you intend to do related to this?
We consider this a teaser for next month's meeting, but I'd like to explore just a little bit deeper about buying some of the equipment outright and seeing what we can negotiate on just the maintenance piece of that. As I understand it, of course, we cannot buy mail meter equipment, but we certainly could buy outright the folder and tabulator and things. So I wanted to kind of dig into that a little bit deeper before the next meeting.
And so with the permission of the board, we, I would ask that we remove this from tonight's agenda and await its return next month. So may I have a motion? A motion to table this? Yes, please. Is there a second?
Second.
And do we need a roll call or is a vote sufficient? I'm losing it. Voice vote, all in favor?
Dye.
opposed? Motion is carried. Next, we have the approval of board delegated levels of authority for construction change orders. Mr. Alves?
While the east campus track is a relatively small project, changes in the scope of work may occur. Some of these changes are nondiscretionary and may include things such as clarifications from a permitting agency or unforeseen conditions that were not known prior to the work being awarded. Other times, a change in work may not be required but desired by the owner after reviewing particular circumstances. In either case, the potential to disrupt the work schedule is very high if a decision on the potential change is not processed in a timely manner. Typically, when a change in work scope is to be considered, the architect will issue a proposal request to the contractor. After pricing the proposed change, the contractor issues a change order back to the architect. The architect then reviews that for appropriateness of cost, and if they find the price acceptable, they pass that on to the owner, and then the owner would sign off, the owner being us, would sign off on that. In order to minimize potential disruptions to the work schedule, the administration recommends that the following board delegated levels of authority be approved. You can see those in your packet. This is the same model that we used in two thousand and six with the referendum construction, in two thousand and eight when we renovated West Campus, recently in District sixty-seven when we did the Q. The thresholds changed by project, and so the numbers that are listed here are what's being recommended for this scope of work. To put this in context, for example, we have a weekly construction meeting. And at the meeting recently, some of the things that were talked about is that the bid specs have the goalposts being replaced in Lindenmeyer Field. We no longer use that as a football field. And Tim was at that meeting and said, we don't need to do that. So that would be a save to us of sixty-five hundred dollars. We also talked through the fact that the bid specs call for sodding of portions of the field that are disrupted through construction. And Pepper Construction has recommended that if we can stay off the field for a year, it would be better to crown and seed the field. We'll end up with a much better turf in the long run. Again, Tim was at that meeting, we talked through all those things. That would be an added cost of fifty-four hundred dollars. So by trading these two things off, we would save a thousand dollars and, in our opinion, get a more improved field. And it's that type of things, those things that come up during the meetings and the value engineering that occurs. And so having some type of delegated level of authority to act on helps expedite that process and keep it moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. Alan, it's not clear from this, is, are these cumulative amounts or per contract change?
These would be per change.
So potentially, we could have lots of changes of fifteen thousand apiece? I have a recommendation in that regard.
You could, but we'd keep you abreast of those as they go. So the ones that are really time sensitive are the ones that we would be acting upon. And usually, those would be from a permitting agency or an unforeseen condition. The things like the ones I'm talking about here, though, well, this one I would act on because it's still a net savings on the two. But usually, we'll try and keep you abreast of changes as they come up.
We wouldn't want to have you come, you know, and say, well, we just made eighty thousand for the changes, fifteen thousand at a time. How could we, how could we address that issue?
If I can interject, I think that this basic template came from a generic construction management paper that I gave you back in '06 in round numbers. And what's not addressed there is a very issue that Mr. Edson brings up, and it's what you might call death by duckbite. And, you know, as opposed to a micro pile issue going back to the two thousand and six project, which was one big single item that was a huge amount of money for us. And I'd like to recommend that we put a cap on that, and I'm perfectly willing to do what's reasonable here. I don't know whether five percent is reasonable or ten percent of overall project costs, but I'm happy to let you go down this road and make decisions on our behalf as long as the overall project, you know, is being maintained at about the level approved. But once you cross a certain threshold, I think it should be incumbent on you all to come back to the board and either receive approval to go further down that road or not, or, you know, some other management practice implemented so that we don't indeed wind up with a situation that Monty is referring to.
There is a soils allowance in the budget and a contingency. I'll get those specific dollar amounts, I can communicate that out. But if you'd be comfortable with that as a aggregate threshold...
Come again with that, please?
There is a soils allowance, so there's money allocated in case we run into bad soils, and we might. And there is a project contingency. If you're comfortable with those thresholds in the aggregate, we would not exceed those. But it's our intention to keep you abreast of change orders as they come up.
Again, I would remind you that project contingency is not a, not designed to be a fund of extra money. Project contingency is an amount of money that you know from experience is going to be spent, you just can identify where it's going to be spent. So it's not really an additional allowance to cover things like changes in scope or, you know, matters of that nature. So I guess I'd be more comfortable setting a limit, you know, independent of those kinds of, you know, assessments, as opposed to using those assessments as a benchmark or a pool to cover change requests. Like I say, I just throw out, I mean, I don't think less than five percent is reasonable, and I don't think more than ten percent is reasonable. So somewhere in the middle there would strike me as appropriate. You know, on this particular project, a roughly two million dollar project, you know, you'd be talking about a hundred thousand if you were talking about five percent. So if the cumulative amount of these kind of decisions that you're talking about trip that hundred thousand dollar barrier, you'd have to come back to the board. And presumably, you're keeping the board informed all the way along, and you either say, gee, I think there's some possibility we'll need more, in which case, maybe we say, okay, we'll extend above that limit until we hit some new limit, or we'll say, well, we'll give you one more twenty-five thousand dollar shot, or we'll say, I'm sorry, you know, we don't think it's appropriate to spend more money here, and you'll have to live within your means. So, but I would like the board to have that final authority at some threshold level.
Think that makes a lot of sense. So I would go on the lower end, because I think the five percent of the project cost should be adequate.
Would it make sense, then, to amend the motion to approve the delegated levels of authority as presented, except that aggregate changes may not increase the overall project cost, including the soil, you had a term for it, the soil and the contingency, the soil allowance and contingency by more than five percent?
Without prior board approval.
Without prior board approval, is that something that we can do?
Can you say that again? So moved.
So moved. Is there a second to that?
I'm sure Mrs. Barr has got every word of that.
Are there any further questions or comments?
I have a question, Alan. Did you, I think in one of your examples, you had mentioned that removing the goalposts will save a certain amount of dollars? Then can I draw the conclusion that the field will not be used for football ever by anybody?
We can always use portable goalposts. And it, the money is being saved by not reinstalling the existing goalposts, but it will not primarily be used for football. It could be, because there are, as I said, portable goalposts that are available, but...
But don't, don't local kids in the community, schools from Deer Path or St. Mary's use that field, and the plan is that they no longer will be using that field?
I believe they use the practice field, do they not, to the west?
The U.S. is historically used Lindenmeyer Field.
So is that communicated, that that's over and people in the community know that? I just want to be sensitive to the folks that showed up here this evening, wondering what's going on. I, you know, as a relatively new board member, I certainly didn't realize that was part of the scope to eliminate the football field, or at least the traditional use of that facility.
I'll verify it with Tim, because Tim attends our construction meetings and has talked about it, and has talked about the portable goalposts. So we won't act on that until we communicate that out to you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? If not, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen? Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Burgner?
Aye. The motion carries. Next is the approval of the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen staff compensation.
I recommend that the compensation be approved as discussed in closed session.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second? Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend, subject to issues that you may foresee, Mr. Simic, that you cover the bottom line impact of those recommendations, to give the board and the community an idea, again, of the relatively modest recommendations that are being proposed here. I think in all cases, we're talking about less than, in each category, we're talking about less than three percent, as I remember, less than CPI, if said another way.
The cost over last year is a net dollar increase of sixteen thousand dollars. So this is less than a one percent adjustment from last year to this year as a net overall administrative change in the district's administrative costs.
I think that's for the senior level group, is it not? And I think the rest of the group amounts to a slightly higher number, but a very modest number nonetheless. So I'm assuming we're approving that whole package that we presented in the executive session, which also included the administrative, what's the right terminology here? I hesitate to use the word secretarial, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, and Mr. Alves has a greater grasp of some of the detail on that.
I don't have the packet in front of me, but I think the last bullet on the executive summary addressed what Mr. Black was talking about with the support staff. I think it was about a two point...
Two point two eight aggregate increase for hourly salary and shared service support staff over last year.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen? Mr. Burgner?
Aye. The motion carries. Next is the moment we've all been waiting for, the approval of the human resources report.
Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Burgner. So this will bring to a close a relatively, compared to many searches, search for the high school principal, Mr. Rogers, whom we met earlier. We all recall that near, very near the end of April, Mr. Hoffman left, unfortunately, for our district and our students and has taken his retirement. And the choice had to be made whether we were going to wait a year or... be made whether we were going to wait a year or post a position quite aggressively and try to find out what the market looked like. In this case, and after having done this a time or two myself, I thought it was worth the risk to post a position, see what we could find, and then through alternative means, or any means, almost any means necessary, try to find a strong, very strong candidate. As it turns out, the search was even shorter than I had anticipated, because the search consultant came back and said, "Look, if you don't have somebody roughly by June, you're going to be waiting until next January." So it's a very accelerated process. We have, we did initial interviews with a team of four, second interviews with a team of 12 with a variety of stakeholders, conducted one site visit with parents, students, and high school staff, and a second site visit with two board members from 115, and some of the middle school principal, Mrs. DeVore, joined us, and 167 board member came along. I'm not sure as a parent or as a citizen that was interested, but we had two really compelling site visits, which clearly demonstrated that what was said in the interview was what was lived in the building, and that was a very vibrant learning culture, a very capable principal with widely regarded by all parties, including the parents. The site visits were necessary because there's no other way to do background checks. I'd also say that I'd like to thank the board for their patience in going through this. One of the things that has become clear is that as a shared service superintendent, there are somewhat different expectations from one group to the other and different norms, and we have a lot of different board members. And so there were times in which their communication with me was very helpful to allow me to dial some things in and adjust to their needs and improve the process as well. So I think this is an ongoing issue, but we certainly have resulted. The result is very, very strong. We have an exceptional high school principal, someone who's very clearly a leader in his field, very clearly demonstrated success in the building that is both very attuned to emotional wellness, emotional wellness needs of its students, and also the highest-performing building in the state of Illinois by the standardized test scores. And so it's a combination of those two things that is really quite interesting, among other things. So recommend the approval of Mr. Rogers' contract and the other portions of the human resources agenda.
May I have a motion for the approval of the human resources report, please?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
Is there a second? Any questions, comments, or discussion? I would just add that I was one of the people who had an opportunity to visit the school last week, and it is a remarkable place. And it's not that it stands out physically as something special, but it's just a vibrant building full of staff that had no real idea why we were there and couldn't speak more highly, I don't think, about the place and the leadership of the place. And it was filled with students who were eager about exploring new paths and learning, and teachers who were using innovative techniques, as Mr. Rogers, I kind of enjoy saying that, too. Talked about with the colloquium earlier tonight. It's, as a parent and as a board member, it's really exciting to think about, probably more as a parent, the prospect of my kids in the next couple of years entering a school that's being led by him, along with the staff that's already there, and the leadership that Mr. Simic will provide from here. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to save these comments to the end of the meeting, but I think this is probably a better time to make them. I think it's very gracious of Mr. Simic to thank us for what, in my case at least, was, if you can yell by email, I guess that's what I did at him, in terms of some aspects of how this unfolded. And he was referring to that when he talked about, you know, differences between our board and 67 and that sort of thing. But I just think, as the last sort of meeting of the school year, I think it's appropriate to look back on all of the challenges that Mr. Simic has faced, that none of us could have foreseen. The strike, just to name a very few of them, the strike, Mr. Hoffman's abrupt leaving, and this need to replace him in short order. And I would just like to thank Mr. Simic, because while the road has been bumpy many times, I think we've all been in it together. And I just want you to know, from my perspective, I certainly appreciate your dedication and everything you've brought to the district here over your initial year. So I think it would be inappropriate to close the year without my saying that. So, thank you.
You know, I'd jump in real quick, just in the spirit of piling on. And I think it has been a crazy year, and Mr. Simic's finished his first full year, I think, on a very high note, not the least of which was graduation. But of course, you know, now the fact that we've got a fabulous talent in Mr. Rogers and bringing his family to our community, I think our, you know, families in Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, and Knollwood will be better served come August, when we get back, and know that we have what we all think is the right person in place to help us move forward. So thanks for the speed and efficiency in which you moved. I think we're in a good spot. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
I would just second what I heard from both of you. Job well done.
If there's no further discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Mr. Powers? Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye. The motion carries. Last on the agenda is the consent agenda, which allows for any member who wishes to discuss any specific item or to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration to request so now. If no requests, then the consent agenda includes approval of disbursements, payroll, and financial statements from May of 2013, minutes of a special meeting held on May 7, 2013, minutes of a regular meeting held on May 14, 2013, minutes of an executive session held on May 14 of 2013, and disposal of audio records from October 10, 2011, and October 27, 2011. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please. Is there a second?
Second.
And a roll call, I believe, is required.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin? Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye. The motion is carried. There were no FOIA requests during the month of May, which is nice. And for announcements, the only announcement, given that the school year is out, is that our next Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 16, here at the West Campus at 7:00 PM. You have just a moment, please. Do you have any final comments, Mr. Simic?
I do. Thank you. This is Dr. Julie Cooley's final meeting with us. And Dr. Cooley's been here for about 10 years now, and has been a devoted and tireless advocate. You can say those two words with great sincerity for all of the students in the district from Lake Bluff, Knollwood, and Lake Forest. And probably the proudest achievement is the building, or the program that exists in this building that services adults, that the board got to tour this past fall. And one of the things that we are going to miss the most from her is thought leadership. And it sounds like a strange thing to talk about thought leadership, but she really is a remarkably sound and insightful thinker on all sorts of different topics, very open-ended, and very, very flexible in her thinking. And some of the things that we accomplished this year, especially the challenges with which we began the year, she was Pollyanna. "We can do this. We can do this." And no building had ever opened without its teachers that we're aware of, and I sure hope we never have to again. And those efforts could not have been as successful as they were without Dr. Cooley's thought leadership on, "We can do this kind of cool program, that kind of cool program." And it wasn't perfect, but it was sure the best that we could do. And it was way, way better because of her and any number of other things that she has done. And you've done a great job, Julie. And our children are better because of you, and we are really going to miss you. Would anybody care to pile on?
I would. And a round of applause first. Nobody knows better than Julie that we didn't always see eye on certain things. But, Mr. Simic, you in particular should know that I one time tried to encourage her to have an interest in being superintendent, and I have a feeling we'll still be able to contact her if needs be. So, thank you, Julie, for everything you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie, for everything you've done for the school and the district and to help educate us along the way, to help make the right decisions. You'll be missed. I believe that wraps it up, unless there are other comments? A motion to adjourn. May I have one, please?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.